The Stevens Point area public school district covers more than 400 square miles, which was once part of the Menominee Nation. It is one of Wisconsin's largest districts. There are nine elementary schools and two junior high schools. There are two senior high schools, the Charles F. Fernandez Center and the Stevens Point Area Senior High. The Point at Discovery School is a public charter school for the grades seven to 12 for the 2022-2023 academic year. There are six specialized schools, the 4K Program, Boston School Forest, Online Learning Center, Project Search, Rural Virtual Academy, and Summer School. During the 2021-2022 academic year, there was a total of 6,967 students, that's seat count, and 474 full-time equivalent classroom teachers for pre-kindergarten to 12th grade. Other staff totaled 459 full-time equivalents in roles such as instructional aides, guidance counselors, librarians and library staff, district and school administrators, and support staff and other support services. The total net revenue for the 2021-2022 academic year for all district funds was $125,838,109, which includes $749,900 of revenue in the Capital Projects Fund. Net total expenditures for all district funds for the same period was $140,874,861, including expenses totaling $16,883,297 in the Capital Project Fund to pay for referendum-approved building projects. The Stevens Point Area Public School District has nine school board members. Members are elected for a three-year term. Citizens of the Stevens Point Area Public School District, 18 years of age and older, may run for a board position. The board meets on the second Monday of the month. School board members are compensated for their service at a rate of $3,779.88 annually. We had to get the 88 cents in there. There are six candidates running for three open seats. The candidates are Miguel Campos, Ted Kowalski, Robert Larson, G. Pope, Christina Scott, and Alex Summers. All candidates were invited to participate, and they are all here tonight. To provide the most time to hear from the candidates and to provide a fair and equal opportunity to answer questions important to you in this community, I will review the format, time, and terms for this forum. This has also been reviewed with the candidates. Each candidate will have a minute and a half to introduce themselves and make an opening statement. They will also have a minute and a half to respond to questions, and then also a minute and a half to make a closing statement. And if needed, I will repeat a question if you would like me to do that. Candidates will first respond to some questions submitted by the League, the Students of the SPAS Student Senate, and the Portage County Business Council, and then questions from the audience will be used. Questions from the audience must be addressed to all the candidates. If you want to submit a question, please motion to one of the ushers for index cards and pencils, and they're over on the sides of the room here. Just motion to them, and they will be glad to help you out. And the League reserves the right to review and screen the questions for relevance and to avoid duplication. There are timers down front, in front of the candidates. A green folder will be held up when time starts. A yellow folder indicates 30 seconds remain, and the red folder means the time has expired. Candidates may finish their sentence and then please stop so the next candidate may begin their response. Candidates are asked to keep their remarks germane to the questions and fair to the participants. Audience members are requested to respect the candidate's time and responses, and we're all asked to turn off your sound-making devices. And as moderator, I reserve the right to interrupt to ensure that these ground rules are observed. The order of response to each question will be rotated. We will alternate which candidate answers the question first. The order of opening and closing statements will be chosen by random, drawing of the candidate's names. As I've already stated, participating in tonight's forum are Alex Summers, Christina Scott, G. Pope, Robert Larson, Ted Kowalski, and Miguel Campos. And now we will begin with a one-and-a-half-minute opening statement, and here's our high-tech selection process. And the first opening statement will be by Robert Larson.
Good evening. I lived most of my life in Stevens Point. I spent four years in the United States Air Force. After service, I went to the University of Wisconsin Stevens Point. After graduating from the university, I went to work for Kraft Heinz. I retired from Kraft Heinz in 2001. During this time, I married, had two children. During my retirement, I ran for a seat on the Stevens Point School Board. I was successful twice, so I have six years of experience on the board. If the voters of the Stevens Point District elect me to the school board, my commitment to you is one, wearing masks would be optional in all school district buildings. Following city guidelines, allow the public to speak for three minutes on a non-agenda item. Consider restructuring the district by the following measures that would reduce the number of students in our overcrowded elementary schools. Move 6th grade out of the elementary schools. Make Ben Franklin 6th and 7th grade school. Make PJ's 8th and 9th grade schools. Investigate programs to help employees get group health and drug care at ages 55 to 65. The employee would pay the premium, but it would allow them participate in a group rate. I encourage everyone in our district to go out and vote April 4th. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next opening statement will be by Christina Scott.
Thank you. So thank you to the League, thank you to the Portage County Business Council, and to our Student Senate for allowing us to share with you our views and why we're here. So I'm a mom, I'm a grandmother, I'm a senior, I'm retired, and I've had three priorities in my life in the last, I would say, 20 years, and that would be work on my health, support my family, and the school district, which I believe is a family to me. I've been on the board for a number of years, and I've been involved in so many amazing things. I had to make a list. It's difficult for me to talk about myself. I don't have much of an ego, and for me, you're not going to see a sign, you're not going to see a Facebook page, you're not going to see a website. For me, it's always been about the work, always been about the kids, supporting kids. What will our community support? And I've tried to be, do as many things to be an advocate. Years ago, we had a board member, Mary Thermeyer, who said, "You need to be an ambassador for your district." I've tried to be involved in every area in our district, the buildings, the Portage County Business Council, our parents, our community. I've been on the board when we didn't have community members on our communities, and I asked to have one of those be a student, and other things like that. So thank you.
Thank you. Next opening statement is G. Pope, please.
Thank you. 69 years old, I've been on the board for three years. I graduated from UWRF, and then I have two master's degrees from UWSP and Marion College in Education. I spent 30 years as a high school chemistry teacher, 20 of them at SPAS. I taught for six years after that at UWSP as a chemistry teacher. I also spent 20 years as a wrestling coach at SPAS. I was part of the group that started the Stevens Point Hall of Fame. I have three sons that graduated, all went through the school system here and graduated from SPAS, and are now working on their jobs. My wife was a special ed teacher, so we've really been involved in education through our whole career. She spent 25 years teaching here in the Point District. I've been in every building that we have kids in in this district, so I know people all over the district, and very familiar with how the district works. And I do my homework. I spent two years coming to school board meetings before I was elected. I've gone to a lot of webinars, seminars, things like that, that the Wisconsin Association of School Boards makes available to us. I took all the beginning seminars that they offer, and I think I really work hard at trying to be a good school board member. Thank you.
Thank you. And our next is Miguel Campos.
First of all, I want to say thanks to the League and Portage County Business Council, along with all the members in the audience, and everybody that will review this later on, unless it's livestreamed, I wasn't sure if that was happening. But thank you for your attendance. This is part of the process. It's great to see so many people out there. Miguel Campos, originally from Odessa, Texas, lived most of my life in Wausau, Wisconsin, after moving to the local area for college. I traveled 37 countries. When I graduated, I decided, out of all the 37 countries, I wanted to still stay here in Stevens Point, Wisconsin. That's how much I love this place. And I was at some pretty cool places in the world. Part of that was because I met my awesome wife and had two great kids, and this was an amazing community with an awesome school district and great business opportunity here. I've got two kids in the district, married since 2014. I was a graduate of UWSP College, loved UWSP. I'm also an active member in the community. I'm a board member of Central Wisconsin Department Association. I have served on the Grants Committee for the Community Foundation for four years now and a member, board member of the Unite Young Professionals. I'm also a part of the County Diversity Affairs and Inclusivity Committee, very active in the community. I think my age is actually a huge benefit for me because I'm right at the sweet spot where I understand what the older generation, what they went through, and I'm still young enough to understand what the younger generation is all about, and I'm still learning from my kids all the new lingo. I think my primary objective here is to bring a balance between student needs, teacher needs, parental needs, and taxpayer needs. Thank you.
Thank you. And then we have Alex Summers.
My name is Alex Summers. I have lived in Stevens Point my whole life. We have seven children, one of, and we school at home. My wife is also an educator. She graduated from UWSP, as did I. One of my students has actually received special ed services through the Stevens Point School District. So it's important for me to understand and to ensure that education is a priority as one of my students, one of my kids, is part of the school district. Moreover, it's important for me as a teacher, I've been teaching Spanish and English, and English is the second language for 11 years now, and it's important for the board to have the voice of a teacher. Oftentimes, board members say that the teacher's voice is heard, but I am a teacher, and I do understand the teacher aspect of things. I also have my master's in administration from UW Oshkosh, and so I also understand the administrative side of things and curriculum. So for me, it's truly a full gambit from being a teacher and a parent, taxpayer, as well as understanding the curricular areas of school. So for me, the school board is truly a vital part of our district and our community.
All right. Thank you. And our last candidate, Ted Kowalski.
Really? Thank you, Sue. Thank you for being here tonight and joining us. Thank you to our viewers, and thank you to the League. My name is Ted Kowalski. I've lived in Plover for over 32 years, and all three of my children went to Ben, graduated from SPAS, and also from the UWSP. I myself graduated from the UW of Madison. I, when my children were in, was in school, were in school, I was PTO treasurer at Roosevelt. I also was a soccer coach for over 16 years. I'm a member at Frey Memorial Church for the last 32 years and a past deacon and ruling elder. I've been a toastmaster, had been trained in public speaking, mentoring, and have earned the highest educational award, Toastmasters offers, Distinguished Toastmaster. My work experience includes Katz Sales in Plovers, Katz Produce, and then Bushman's Incorporated in Rochelle. In 2018, I decided to change careers because of a change in attitude, and I went back to school at MSTC, and I went into tax accounting. I worked for mid-state accounting for the last four years before I retired in July of last year. Currently, I'm a tax preparer volunteer over at the ADRC, the Lincoln Center, helping with tax counseling for the elderly. I am done.
Thank you. And you're done? Thank you. All righty. And I'm going to draw for the first, to start the round of questions, and we will start with G. Pope as the first person to answer the questions, and then we will go in a rotation order. And here's the first question. With a projected structural deficit of $4.6 million and a zero increase in state funding for this school year and possibly next, in your view, is our school district approaching a fiscal cliff? Would you support a recurring referendum in the next couple of years to increase school
I think that just about every school district in the state of Wisconsin is going to look at a referendum, an operating referendum, a recurring referendum, in this year or next year. It's just inevitable. We are working, though, to trim whatever we can, whatever's left, after 20 years of cuts to public education, not really much help from state legislators. We're at the point where there isn't much left to cut. We do have a working model, though, that our administrators are using to find areas to cut, and I'm sure we'll find some, but we're hoping that with a $7 billion excess, surplus in state funds, that that's going to find its way to public schools, to public entities such as firefighters, policemen, things like that. I was listening to the radio this morning, and they said, somebody said it's a one-time surplus, but it's not. We've had a surplus for the last three years. There's, the money is there. We don't have to raise taxes or anything. Things just cost more, and we've basically balanced our budgets on the backs of our personnel, our staff, and we need to pay them. So we're looking at, what do they call, a financial cliff for every school district in the state.
Thank you. Christina Scott.
Everything he said, really. So actually, the way I first became part of the school district community was as a parent. When we moved here, I had other parents come and say they were working on a referendum, and would I be interested in helping? And I said, "Well, I don't know anything about it, but if you give me all the grunt work, I'm happy to do it." And we went around to other districts to find out what was going on with school funding and learned a lot. I've actually been involved in three or four referendums, two which failed, and when they did fail, we talked about what's going to happen, because we know if we don't have the money, we either are going to have to look at cuts of programs, or our staff is going to have to be affected by that. So right now, we are doing a budget evaluation process, because as G. said, there are a lot of districts who are going to have to go to referendum, because this is how the funding system is set. We're in trouble, and we really are looking at every possible way to address this, and it's because we don't want to take things away from our kids or our staff. They both have a lot on them right now, especially after the pandemic, and so they're looking at everything, the board's looking at everything, and I'm really confident when we explain to the community what's going on, that we will succeed in doing what we need to do.
Thank you. Alex Summers.
So whenever we talk of deficits or increase of school funding, we also have to look at the budget. And I have been looking at the budget for Point. My master's was actually on, my thesis of my master's was actually on budgets, because playing with numbers is fun. However, with that deficit, we have to also look at how the funding models work. So it's based on the number of students. Last year, we had funds coming in from transfer students. If I'm not mistaken, I checked the budget on Monday, it was about $10 million from students that came in. However, we also had four, over $4 million of money going out to other school districts because we had students leaving our district. So for me, it's also, how can I attract or keep the students that are leaving our district? So if we're looking at, we're getting paid per student, how do we attract more students to our district? And that is how we start to compensate for some of those things. Are we still at a financial cliff? Yes. However, how can we bolster what we have going already? We have good schools. How do we make them so that we can attract more students from other areas? And so for that, that is my biggest thing.
All right. Thank you. Miguel Campos.
Do I support a recurring referendum? Well, I don't think we'll have much, much of a choice. We want to keep the great district we have and keep it moving forward. However, as I stated last year before, I will support a referendum. I would promise the community that I want, and the taxpayers specifically, that we need to go over the budget with a fine-tuned comb to make sure there aren't redundancies in our expenses. This is, I own a small business, you know, through COVID. I had to sacrifice a lot for my business as well as my family. It was not fun for us, it was not fun for my family, but it's something that was necessary. Sometimes pain comes along with these choices. We need board members that are going to be able to take that kind of heat from the community because there may be, especially if a referendum doesn't pass and we're not able to make the argument and convince the citizens that it's important to make this investment, that we're going to have to make some serious cuts, and there's going to be some livelihoods that are affected. We need board members that can be a part of looking at the budget to see if we can, if we can find efficiencies, if we can even look at creative outside-the-box solutions to work with other districts for economies of scale. I'm not sure if that's been looked at, but I know a lot of businesses through the pandemic had to do stuff like that, coming out of the pandemic. It's a lot of interesting things that businesses are doing now in order, because of the costs that have gone up, and the costs are just rising more and more and more. So do I support it? I absolutely do, but not until we look at the budget completely and thoroughly and make some hard decisions first before, before we go to referendum. And then we need to start educating the public now that this is a possibility. No one likes being blindsided that their taxes are going up, no matter how much it is.
Thank you. Ted Kowalski.
What G. said is correct. G. has been very spot-on with what is going on with the school board now. The school board is looking very hard at how to save money on the budget and how to look at extending the funds that we do have. The basic answer, though, I think, is that there will be a referendum, and I would support it, because we need those funds in order to do what we need to do for the district, for the students, and for the community. I've been on the Economics Committee for the school board as a volunteer, as a citizen volunteer for the last two years, and I've learned a lot, and I see that the school board is functioning as a unit. It's a cohesive unit, they're doing a good job, and they're really looking to see how they can do this in a much better way, and see what's coming forward, and prepare for it. But given the realities of what life is, and with the expenses in the world, a referendum looks to me like a fact of life we're going to have to face, and I would support it.
Thank you. And Robert Larson.
Good evening. A non-recurring referendum or a recurring referendum? I just want to make sure everybody understands that. A recurring referendum, if it passes, it goes forever. A non-recurring referendum would normally sunset in three years. So if I was myself, I would prefer a non-recurring referendum because it allows the taxpayers to keep control a little bit. Once that non-recurring referendum, that recurring referendum passes, it goes forever. It doesn't stop. We need to be a little sharp on maximizing our tools that we have for efficiency. I said three years ago, close the Fernandez School and move the students over to the old Jackson School. They're finally doing that. It was foolish on my part to see Jackson School being reopened, $2 million to fix it, to get it up to speed, for 54 students. It makes no sense. So I would say to the administration, continue looking how to maximize our savings, but as far as a recurring referendum, no, I would go for a non-recurring referendum so the people have control of their monies. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next question, we'll start with Christina Scott. And the question is, what do you see as the main causes of student achievement gaps within our schools, and how should our district address them?
Well, that's a big question. I'm not sure what the main cause is. I know that we've had, I'm sure that the pandemic added to a lot of the concerns we've had, putting kids in online learning, and some of the diversity, when you look at, where are our students getting information from? If a student has a disability, or if a student is from a different country, and we give them tools, all the same tools, they may not succeed, and they don't all have the same access to information as we do. I know that our district is doing a lot in all of the schools, in all the areas. They've put more money, they've put in an academic, think of the word. Interventionist. Interventionist to look at those things, and they're continually keeping records of grades and scores to say, what's happening? How can we change this? How do we address this? So I can't tell you what the main cause is. I guess if I talked to a number of teachers, they would probably have a lot better idea, but even they, doing as much as they can, and they are, to address this, and so is our district, we're aware of it. We're getting reports of what's going on and how we can best address it.
Thank you. And before we go to Mr. Summers, I do want to encourage our audience members to submit questions, if you have any, to our ushers so that we can include your questions as well in this panel. So Alex Summers, same question.
I'm going to repeat it again so I make sure that I have it correct. It is the main cause of the student achievement gap, correct?
Within our schools, and how should our district address them?
Okay. So when I have spoken to teachers from our district, specifically elementary teachers, I have heard that there isn't a unified curriculum, and the teachers that I were talking to were four teachers from different elementary schools, and there wasn't one unified school curriculum when it came to reading and language. So for me, having one proven curriculum where teachers are not expected to figure out where they're pulling information from, but having one curriculum that's at all of the schools, and there are ways to find proven curriculum, and I'm sure that we have done due diligence in that area, but ensuring that all of our teachers have that same access. And when I was speaking to the teachers of our, some of the teachers of the district, they said, "We're paying for these things out of pocket for classroom materials and for curriculum." And that was a concern that they said when I was talking to them. And so for me, as a teacher, ensuring that all of our teachers have well-vetted curriculum is one of the, one of the main things to ensure that we can start to close that gap. Moreover, we need to figure out how we, as a school, need to work with our parents, because it takes two parties to educate. It's a parent and it's a teacher. And when teachers and parents work together, we can achieve the students' education.
Thank you. Miguel Campos.
Gosh, this is definitely a hard one. This is an ongoing one. It's been, it's been a topic of discussion for as long as I've been alive, I feel like, but I think it definitely comes back a lot to money. You know, we need educational assistance, we need interventionists. The pandemic just exacerbated that need across the board, and that comes with money. We also need teachers who are, we need to understand the pressure that teachers are under nowadays. I can't tell you how many teachers I've talked to, like Alex mentioned, the amount of money they spend on their own, the amount of time they spend outside of the classroom hours, and behavioral issues that have gone unchecked, that I don't blame teachers for not wanting to be teachers. for not wanting to be teachers anymore. I wouldn't want to be a teacher if I had to deal with those issues either. Teachers are not behavioral experts, they're teachers. And if they can focus exclusively on teaching, they'd probably do a stellar job at teaching our kids, having nothing to do with the budget. So we need to empower our teachers and better understand what their issues are that they're dealing with and figure out, we might have to have hard conversations with, with parents and administration to understand the respect that needs to be given teachers in the classroom and how, how to go about that in a fair manner. And, you know, again, coming back to the budget, we, we need more EAs, we need more interventionists, at least for the next five years to catch up after the losses through COVID. There's no easy answer, but it comes back to understanding what the teachers are doing, their opinions, and somehow finding money for it. If, if we don't find money for it, I, I don't see an easy solution here.
Thank you. Ted Kowalski.
The gaps, I think, are pretty much in agreement that the pandemic has really caused a lot of the loss that we've seen for the student population. And so the way things have gone for the children from learning at home and from being out of the classroom and being out of touch with one another. And so that's really no surprise to anyone. As far as the correcting and to, to bring back and to close that, that loss in achievement, the district already has a plan in place where they're monitoring how the students currently are doing. And they're doing this through a normal program already on the school board. They monitor closely the achievements of their students. G is chair of the education committee, and he is seeing this, and I've seen his reports on this, how the students are doing. They take that information, they share that information with the teachers, with the different, with the administration, and they go back and they focus where they can do better. And they try to close that gap in the progress and help the students to meet the needs.
Thank you. Robert Larson.
Hi. To increase the achievements of our students, first, I would eliminate e-learning and go to live learning. Second, do not allow cell phones in the classes. Require students to leave their phones in their lockers. Let's get back to the basics. Teach our kids reading, writing, arithmetic, and practical life skills. Thank you.
And G Pope.
As Chris mentioned, we, our superintendent actually started a program of academic interventionists this, this year. These are high-powered veteran teachers that are searching out those kids that are getting lost in the cracks. They don't fit in as, in a special ed category, but they're not achieving like they should be. So we're finding those kids. I've talked to several of these teachers and they are fired up about this. So we're looking for those kids and we're finding them. I was listening to, it was a state convention a couple of years ago. It was, it was one in the middle of COVID where it was all online. This lady was an educator from Washington DC. She was in some big school or panel or something. And they were talking about the disparity between lowest-achieving kids and higher-achieving kids. In this case, it was race. And they asked her, where was to be the worst place to send your, she's African-American, to send your kids to school in the United States? She said Wisconsin. We had the highest, highest disparity between black kids and white kids in our school, in our schools in Wisconsin. I was personally ashamed. We've made some progress. What I'm saying about our faculty is our faculty should represent what our community looks like, and we're not there yet. And we need to do more along that line. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next question, several of you have touched a little bit on this, but we're going to start with Mr. Summers, Alex Summers. And the question is, our district has a strong, dedicated, and knowledgeable staff. With all the additional expectations on our teachers, what are the ways the school district could better support and retain them?
That question is the age-old question and one that we were just talking about in teacher meeting yesterday at my school, to ensure that we are attracting and retaining the best professionals. And so I'm going to talk about it from a teacher lens. One, we need to feel that we're supported by our administration. A lot of times, teachers feel that they're expected to do all of these things and it's a pat on the back, thank you very much. And there's no, there's no gratitude for the staff. Staff feel taken advantage of, that they have to do all of these expectations, and there's no compensation. Even having an administrator, if there is a, a problem with discipline, that the teacher deals with it, but then the administration backs the teacher up. So when we're looking at retention of teachers, we have to look at why are they leaving? Is it because they're not feeling support? Is it because they're expected to do all kinds of extra things? Is it because they are willing to get paid more? I know that Rhinelander just passed a large increase for their teachers. I think it was higher than a 7% increase for their teachers. And so how, so through extra funding, all of those things are ways that we can look at how we can retain our teachers.
Thank you. Miguel Campos.
I think, I think we need to spend a great deal of time speaking with our teachers and board members. I, I do know that our current board does a lot of that, interacting with the teachers. I think we need to do an inordinate amount of that. Teachers are dealing with issues that teachers in my, in my era never had to deal with. The level of behavior issues that they have to do with, deal with is, is borderline insane. I wouldn't expect any teacher, I would never deal with half of what the teachers deal with, which is why I'm not a teacher. But I also, I also understand the amount of extra personal time and money that is spent out of teachers' pockets. Our teachers never used to do that. Maybe they made cupcakes on their own dime back in the day to bring in. But to have those expectations, I, I think it's unreasonable to expect teachers to do any of that or deal with any of those circumstances and not have, have the, the board and the community be fully aware of the things that teachers do to go above and beyond to teach all of our students and the things that they have to deal with from our students. I think there needs to be interaction with parents and how parents can help mitigate some of this for the teachers because half of this is the parent's responsibility. But somehow it's, it's been put on the teachers to deal with, and we're seeing a lot of revolting of that. And they're leaving. The good teachers are leaving because they can find better opportunities in other districts that are, that are addressing this issue or in the private sector and, and triple their income, especially right now after COVID. So we need to, we need to talk to more teachers more often to understand what we can do to help them. And I understand we are doing that, we just need to do it more.
Ted Kowalski.
Supporting the staff is an important part of the school board. The teachers, the annual loss of teachers right now, I think, is around 12%. And if you take out how many of the teachers are retiring, that brings us down to around 10%. And that puts us on a par, and actually, I believe that puts us a little better than the surrounding districts of DC Everest and around our area. The problem comes down to, I think, money. And money. Because a lot of it is, as you just said, they can go out and do different things and double their income and do, change their jobs. And why put up with the stress of what they're doing in, as a teacher? So, and which is another reason that I think we're going to be looking at the referendum because to be competitive in our area, to retain the teachers that we have and to recruit the teachers that we look to have, we're going to have to increase wages. I think another point that you touched on too is culturally, teachers are not respected the way they should be. They put up with a lot. At one time, being a teacher was like being a doctor, which puts you on a pedestal. And it's not like that anymore. And that's a, that's a sad shame because teachers do a lot. That's something that the community and the family can help mitigate too.
Okay, thank you. Robert Larson.
Unlike the federal government that can continually print money, Stevens Point School District doesn't have that opportunity. I can't tell you what the wages are or what the benefits are for the current school district employees or the surrounding area. What I can tell you based on my property taxes, we've had a lot of referendums recently coming in, and we have future referendums coming. The courthouse wants a new jail, $200 million. I think we have to look at everything, how much the taxpayers can afford based on the current property taxes. So I think you have to look at the total thing, and I don't have the knowledge right now. I don't know the average salaries, the benefits. All this needs to be looked at and what does the benefits and salaries of our areas like Wausau, Marshall, Rapids compare to Stevens Point, but, thank you.
Thank you. G Pope.
Can you repeat the question?
Sure. Our district has a strong, dedicated, and knowledgeable staff. With all the additional expectations on our teachers, what are the ways the school district could better support and retain them?
Okay. I monitor, supervise student teachers for UWSP. So I go into a lot of schools during the year. I watch a lot of teachers. They do more things in a couple of minutes than I could imagine doing all year. When you've got a bunch of little kids around you, and I call it their magic. They perform their magic every day, every hour, every minute that they're in school. It's unbelievable to watch. Teacher pay has gone down. This comes from a DPI report. Dan Rossmiller, a lobbyist for Wisconsin Association of School Boards, posted data that showed that in $2021, teachers now make 13% to 17% less than they did in the year When I go into schools, more often than not, I have to talk to the principal because, I try to talk to the principal, but they're usually teaching a class. I went to a school in Kimberly last year where they said they met every morning to see how many teachers they had available, and if they didn't have enough available, they had to call school off. I don't, I am not sure, but I don't think we've ever had a full staff this whole year, teachers and teachers assistants. That's how hard it is to get. Yeah, it's money. But I am thankful, I am thankful that when I see our teachers in our district and other districts working, that they're still out there. They're still working their magic in spite of all these things. Thank you.
Thank you. And Christina Scott.
I think there are a lot of things that are really important. I left a job after 16 years, a job I really liked, and I loved going to work every day. And I have to tell you, it wasn't because of the money. And I believe, and I could be wrong, I don't think a majority of our teachers are only there because of the money. I believe that there are different things. One would be, they need to be open and heard, and they need to have support. And it's not only the teachers, it's all of our staff, our ed services, our educational assistants, our bus drivers, our food service. But the teachers are right on the line, and teaching from years ago to teaching today is unbelievable. I was an educational assistant here, a substitute here. I worked with hearing impaired kids in Denver. What goes on in those rooms is unbelievable. I think we have a really, really good administration, and they're very open, and they want to help, and they want to listen, and they want to do what they can. But I also think, besides the administration, I think the community needs to understand, and I know the community that I talk to, they love and respect our teachers, but they need to understand too, that the financial part, for all of the things they're doing that they've never had to do before, including the mental health issues and a lot of the things that are not the basic, reading, writing, and math.
Thank you. We have a question from the audience, and because of time, this was a one-hour forum, I'm going to ask our candidates just to take one minute to answer this question. So our timers, if you'll do that. And this question, as I said, comes from the audience, and we start with Miguel Campos. What will you do to integrate youth voices in decisions being made for youth in the school district?
That's a new question. It's a good question. I, I think introducing youth voices, I, I think you, you have, we have a lot of members of, presumably of the student senate here tonight. I, I think inviting the, the students to come to maybe board meetings to be a part of the process, part of the reason I'm even running for the school board, one of the reasons is because I'm 41 and I think this is a good time for people to start entering to learn the ropes of how a school board operates because the older generation needs to pass the baton to my generation, and I'd rather have a whole lot of time to learn how to do this properly than just running in and, and getting in it at the last minute. So I think that's a, I think it's good to invite the youth in to understand the process of, of how a board works, how a school district works, and, and hear their opinions. They do matter. It is them we're educating. So I think they, I think they serve a purpose, and I, I think inviting them is, is how you start that process, really. Thank you.
Thank you. Ted Kowalski.
Sue, I'm going to ask you to repeat the question.
Sure. What will you do to integrate youth voices in decisions being made for youth in the school district?
Okay. And you said youth voices?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you, my hearing. Okay. Thank you, Sue. There is currently a student representative on the school board that does reports in one of the committees, and, and I think that's one of the great things to see. The student organizations that are in the schools are wonderful things, and having them, inviting them to the school board and seeing how they're going too. This is something that I think that we might talk to the administration about, and I think that they could, we could probably come up with some interesting ideas to show them how different things are done and how the administration works, to expose them more to what the overall picture of running the school is.
Okay, thank you. Robert Larson.
First of all, the school board works for the taxpayers. We don't work for them. And you're talking about getting kids to participate? The average person can't even participate currently with their, their rules. They need to go, like the city, to allow people to speak on a non-agenda item, agenda item for three minutes. People need to be able to talk to the board. I think right now, the only thing the board allows is that you stick to the agenda item only, and if you send them an email, it has to be under 100 words. We need to open it up to the public again. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris, G Pope.
Ted mentioned that the, we have a student that sits on the board. They're non-voting, but they report on things that happened in the, in the school system to the board. We used to have, give awards and things like that. Students used to be present at the school board meeting before COVID. That kind of stopped during COVID, and we're working up to having it happen again at the beginning of next year. So we get students in the boardroom so they can see us, we can see them. We're also have a program where we're getting into schools more. I mean, when I walk into school, it's just like being home again. The kids are great, they talk, their energy is wonderful, and we get to talk to them. They get to talk to us if we're there, face-to-face with them, and that's what part of that program is. Thank you.
Thank you. Christina Scott.
We do have a student rep at our board meetings, and like I said in the beginning, when we were looking at putting community members on our committees, I asked to have one of those committee members be a student because there's no one that's more affected by what we do than our students. One of the things I was able to do and very excited to do was meet with Katrina Shankland and our student senate, who had presented questions for her about government and about things that the, that were, they were concerned about and in the legislature, what they could do. So that was really exciting, and talked about the process of being an elected official. So I think we could, we can probably look at other things to do, but I think it's really important that they understand, watch, watch our board meetings, come to the board meetings, and maybe there's a process we could use to invite them more often.
Okay, thank you.
Repeat it one more time.
Yes. What? Yes. "What will you do to integrate youth voices in decisions being made for youth in the school district?"
When I first graduated from UWSP and I applied for an English job at SPAS, one of the people that was interviewing me was a student. And so just having that student on the interview committee to ask the question, to know what's going on, was a really cool thing for me to see because it truly showed the student voice. I don't need to rehash that we, we have a member already that's on the board, a non-voting member, albeit. But, but to allow the students to also talk at, at the board meetings because our decisions do affect what's going on in the schools. And we don't realize, because sometimes we're up here, we don't realize what happens up here affects our students greatly. And so we need to make sure that our students can say, "That decision really affected us in X, Y, Z ways." And it might not be on an agenda, but it has to be addressed because that's who is being affected.
Thank you. It's time for our closing statements. And again, we're going to do by, by draw. And this is an opportunity for the candidates to comment on topics not covered in the questions. And each candidate will have a minute and a half to do their statement. And we will start with Miguel Campos.
Well, I want to say thank you, everyone, again, for coming here tonight. Thank you to the league and thank you again to Portage County Business Council for hosting the event this evening. I just want to say, everybody up here has the best intentions to create amazing outcomes for our student population and our teachers. We have different ways of doing it, but we all have a common goal of, of seeing those outcomes come to fruition. I'm asking for your vote this April 4th as a parent, as a taxpayer, and as a business owner who understands that good investments like education pay back social dividends in perpetuity. And that's good for society. That's good for all of us. So thank you again and you all have a great evening.
Thank you. Next is Christina Scott.
So I just have to say, this has been part of my life for a long time. I've seen so many positive things come along that I've been a part of. I didn't do them by myself. I had eight other community members and an administration to do that. I don't, again, I don't have an ego saying, "I did this or I can do this." I can bring forth information, but I can say, I have had, I have spent more time and more love being a part of this district than other than my family. It's meant so much to me to be a part of that. And when people think about us as a board, you have to remember, board members are community members, that's who we are. And all of the decisions we make, we try to make in the best interest of those students. Right now, I believe, after serving many years with many boards under, with many superintendents, that we have a board that really does the work. We're not a rubber stamp board, but we are really together and functioning well. And our, that affects everyone in this district, our kids, our staff, and our community. And I think I'd like to really continue on doing wonderful things and the things that we can do. And I hope, I'm not going to ask you to vote for me, but I'm going to ask you to consider voting for me. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Alex Summers.
I want to, once again, echo the thankfulness for the League of Women Voters, the Portage County Business Council, and the student senate. When thinking about school board and the necessity of ensuring that we have quality education for our students, our community, our future leaders, and the ability for us to work as a community to ensure that our students can achieve great things. And when doing that, we have to understand how much work goes into that. And moreover, how we can each bring a different lens to the conversation. Because we have a lot of different lenses on the board, from parents, grandparents, business, business leaders, teachers. And so to have all of that varied lens, we also need to ensure that through everything that we're working together with parents. We aren't school verse parent. It is us together educating our, our children. And so for me, that ability to, to work together is, is so important. And moreover, I want to just say that as a teacher, that I understand the importance of having a board that can truly achieve things for a district.
Thank you. Ted Kowalski.
Thank you. Thank you for being here tonight. Thank you for putting this program on and form. I've enjoyed my time, my last two years on the Business Service Committee, and I've learned a lot. I'm ready to commit to running for school board member for what I've learned. I realize there's much more for me to learn. I look forward to actively participating in the school board and affirming the leadership that we already have. The school board is a cohesive unit. They're banding, banding together to do things better, to bring us out of the COVID pandemic. They are looking at different ways to make it better, to increase the funds, to retain the teachers, to do things better for the students. The school board is doing a good job. The administration is doing an excellent job. I would like to be a part of that. Mike Wade recently resigned as he went to a different job. And in some of his parting comments, he's, I asked him what, what kind of advice he would give me. And he said, "Ted, look for the synergy for community, for the administration, for the students to come together. And every once in a while, you'll come up with something that really works well and it works for everyone." I would appreciate your vote for school board.
Thank you. Robert Larson.
There was a, in the journal, one of the questions for candidates was, "Data shows a number of behavior incidents in the district have increased, especially in the junior high. What are your thoughts on that?" First of all, it's not a district problem, it's a family problem. Parents need to teach the children the family values that they were taught when growing up. Students need to know that there are consequences for their actions. Parents are held accountable for their children's actions, yet when they try to discipline their children, they could have social services confronting them. Government needs to get out of the way of the parents. The other thing I talked earlier about was the restructuring of our school, school grades. Here's a couple of numbers. Ben Franklin has 888 students. The usage capacity of that building is 54%. PJ Jacobs has 642 students. Usage capacity is 47% of the building. And SPAS has 1,488 students. Usage capacity, 62% of the buildings. We need to look at these things to become more efficient. I hope you all go out and vote and I hope you vote for me, but go out and vote. That's the most important thing. That's a precious thing that we have as a free country. Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, G. Pope.
I can best sum up how I feel about education with a little story. I was a wrestling coach, as I mentioned, for 20 years here at SPAS. And for a while, I was the assistant. Our head coach at the time, his name was Dave Amdahl. He was a teacher in the district, but he was my mentor in education. So one day, a kid comes up and he wants to quit. He's talking to Dave for a while. It must have gone on for a half an hour, 45 minutes. The kid, the kid himself, he would, you would label him, he was hard to have him on the team. He caused a lot of trouble, had a bad background, the family wasn't very supportive. But he was on our wrestling team at the time, but he wanted to quit. And they talked and talked and talked. Came out of the office, Dave gave him a big hug. I said, "What's up, Dave?" He says, "Well, he's going to stay on the team." He said, "Don't you know, every kid matters." And since then, I've used that to guide myself in dealing with educational matters. We have 7,000 kids, but to you, it's your kid that matters. And that's, that's what I've tried to remember. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, thank you to the candidates for the time and energy they have invested in running to serve on the Stevens Point Area District School Board and for participating in this forum. And hopefully you'll stay afterwards and talk with some of the constituents. I also want to mention that on the April 4th ballot, Portage County voters will also be voting for several other offices, including Justice of the Wisconsin Supreme Court, the Wisconsin Court of Appeals, District 4, Wisconsin Circuit Court Branch 1, Plover Village Board Ward 2 trustee, Plover Village Board President, Stevens Point Mayor, and Stevens Point Alder Persons. Also on the ballot are three statewide ballot measures. One is to authorize the state legislature to define serious harm in relation to the conditions a judge imposes on an accused person released before conviction. A second authorizes judges to impose cash bail on an accused person of a violent crime based on circumstances, like the need to protect the community from serious harm and the probability of the accused will not appear in court. And then the third advises the state legislature to require able-bodied, childless adults to look for work in order to receive taxpayer-funded welfare benefits. Stevens Point voters will see two road referendums on the ballot totaling $4.2 million for routine maintenance projects. So there's a lot on our ballots this spring. The League of Women Voters of Wisconsin has a candidate guide for the Wisconsin Supreme Court election, which may be found at vote411.org. Myvote.wi.gov also provides information about the April elections and the voting process. This concludes the forum for the Stevens Point Area Public School Board candidates. Thank you, candidates. Thank you, audience, for your participation and attention. We also wish to thank Dan Bemowski from the Stevens Point Area School Board, School District who taped the forum. The recording will be available on the stevenspoint.com YouTube site and other social media. These broadcasts are an appreciated service to area citizens. And as a side note, the, the forum for the school board last spring had over 500 views. So people are watching them in the community. Thank you to the league members, student senators, and members of the Portage County Business Council who volunteered in various roles this evening to make the forum possible. We couldn't do it without all of them. Thank you to the staff of Ben Franklin Junior High School for their assistance and the use of the auditorium. The league believes that when you vote, you are participating in one of the most basic and important responsibilities you have as a citizen. When you vote, you are empowering your political voice. Please remember to vote on April 4th. Your vote does count. And now let us show our appreciation to the candidates and have a good evening.